Hello, everybody. It is 6:30 and I am going to call the order, the meeting to order. The Stratford Planning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Regular members present at this meeting are Alec Vacola and Joe, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank.
Joe Garricks.
Garricks, sorry. Ultimate members present are Mr. Kingston. Members who are not, are absent are Steve Rowe and Max Doolin, and I am also present as a regular member, Sarah Graham. Thank you. Let it be noted for the record that Mr. Kingston, the ultimate member of the Planning Commission, is sitting in place of Mr. Doolin, our regular member. Before calling for the first petition, I'd like to inform those of you who have never appeared before us that it is public, it is policy of this commission to have questions of the petition or direct them through the chairman. The chair reserves the right to rule on a cross-examination for the purpose of clarification of technical questions. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more than, more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued at another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised on the Town Planning and Zoning Page and in Town Clerk's Office in accordance with state statutes. I will now advise the town planner to read the first petition.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a petition of developer David P. DeCilio seeking a five-lot subdivision of 630 James Farm Road property with lots ranging from 3,043 square feet to 3.7 acres. This was previously approved by the Stratford Planning Commission on March 21st, 2023, and for which the approval expired on December 23rd, 2023. So the petitioner is now requesting the commission to review the subdivision application once again and make a decision. He also requested a waiver of open space requirements of subdivision regulations as part of this proposal, and the soil erosion and sediment control plan is subject to an administrative review of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Sismita Tada, who I did not announce as our town planner, and we also have Eileen Marsh as our secretary. Okay, so is petitioner or representative present? Please announce your name and address for the record. The petition was advertised in the CT post on September 3rd, 2024, and September 13th, 2024, 2024. The petitioner also posted a sign on the property and is now requested to submit their certificates of mailing to the abutters in case they haven't provided those already. Now invite the petitioner and/or petitioner's representative to present their case. Hi.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is David DeCilio. I live at 620 Main Street, Stratford, Connecticut, and I'm the owner of the property. I'm not an attorney and I'm not an engineer, but certainly I've consulted them to come up with the plan I'm presenting this evening. As the town planner mentioned, neighborhood notification letters were sent out and a sign was posted. Proof of both the sign and those letters were submitted to the town in the recent past. Before submitting this application, I went before other town boards and commissions and obtained approvals for this site plan and was granted approvals from both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Inland Wetlands Commission. Copies of those approvals were submitted with my application. Now, before I begin, has anybody had an opportunity to visit the site? Okay. It's a, it's a beautiful, it's the highest point in all of Stratford, and it's, I call it the Fedorco Farm. It's just under 10 acres. Mr. Fedorco built a very unique house on it made out of concrete and steel, looks like a weather station or something, and he built a windmill on it. And then that windmill was eventually converted to a cell tower in the 1990s, and part of the application I'm presenting tonight is going to show you where that's located, and that will be lot number five. So the map I have here, if you can see it, but copies were submitted, is a existing condition survey, and it shows that the existing property consists of 9.6 acres of land. The property has 254 feet along James Farm Road and is 1,250 feet deep. The rear of the property abuts the Orno Country Club, which is now renamed the Black Hawk, Black Hawk Country Club's second hole, and there exists approximately 1.1 acres of wetlands to the rear of the property. There are several buildings on the property, including the single-family house I previously mentioned, along with a detached multi-car garage, a shed, a cell tower with associated equipment. And all existing structures, the house and all the garages are on lot number one. So the plan I just turned over the page is the subdivision map, and the subdivision map is a plan showing my proposed, proposal to divide this property into four residential building lots. One of those four lots has the existing house on it, so I'm creating three new residential lots. Lot one has 178 feet of frontage along James Farm Road, is 409 feet deep, and is 1.626 acres with no wetlands. Lot number two, let me point that out. Lot number two is a rear lot or an interior lot that is directly behind lot number one with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 203 feet and a depth of 703 feet. Totals six point, excuse me, totals 3.6 acres with 2.9 acres of usable area and .46 acres of wetland soils to the rear of the property, and the wetland soils are identified, identified on this map, on all these, this map as the dotted area. Let me point that out. Lot number three is a rear lot with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road and a width of 207 feet, very similar to lot two, and a depth of 560 feet. Totals 2.28, 2.82 acres with 1.891 acres of usable area and .61 acres of wetlands to the rear of the property. Lot four is a rear lot with 25 feet of accessway along James Farm Road, a width of 182 feet, a depth of 204 feet, and total of 1.5 acres with no wetlands. Now, the fifth parcel, or lot five, is extremely unique. In the middle of lot one exists a communications tower, a cell tower, and associated equipment, and what I mean by associated equipment, there's a building that has their technological equipment in there, so we can all go on Facebook and do whatever we do on our phones. Now, that originally was a residentially used structure but was converted to be commercially used, and the reason I went to the Zoning Board of Appeals to ask for a very aggressive waiver, and they granted it from an acre down to 3,000 feet, is I want to deed that property to the cell tower company. I don't want it to be part of it. Let the town tax it separately, let them keep their cell tower and do their thing. So that's lot number five, and it's hard to see from your distance, but I'll point it out. It's this little tiny parcel right here, and it sits, it sits like a donut hole sort of in the middle of lot one. Now, the cell tower company has recorded and deeded easements over the driveway to lot one to access that. So if they need to access their equipment, or for whatever reason, you know, hang a new piece of equipment on the tower, they have access and the rights to do that. They also have easements over lot one for underground utilities should they ever need to upgrade the utilities, but I think there's, that's pretty well set as of right now. Now, let me turn this. Lots of details from this distance, but this is the site plan, and the site plan shows the proposed locations of three new residential dwellings. Each new home, as mentioned, will be on between 1.5 and 3 acres. Water will be provided by public, by private well and sewer by onsite septic systems. There is no water or sewer in this location of northern Stratford, or no, it's like maybe 1,000 feet or 1,500 feet away, it's far away. All electrical will be supplied by, and communication signs will be underground, and the site plan shows a single driveway from James Farm Road that will serve all three homes, and let me point that out. And the reason for my design of a single driveway is because I think it would look unusual and it would be very costly to put three driveways up, like three pencils running up from James Farm Road. So a single wider driveway with appropriate drainage and stormwater management with cross easements to each other's homeowners and a maintenance agreement, which is very critical, by the way, so there's nobody arguing, hey, I'm not paying for the snow plowing, will be in place should this plan be approved and implemented. All driveways will have drains. All gutters from the homes will be piped to underground chambers, and this driveway, I like to call it a private road, will have multiple catch basins to collect rain and snow melt and underground retention chambers. Now, this is probably a good time for me to mention that although this plan was approved unanimously by the board, unbeknownst to me, after I made my new application, I learned that the drainage requirements have changed, and now I need to increase the amount of retention from one inch of rain, stormwater runoff, to 1.3. I emailed my engineer and he's working on that modification among a few others I will mention, but it will be addressed in the forthcoming plan. Now, the last drawing I'd like to show you is my soil and erosion control plan. It calls for up to 400-plus feet of silt fence along the northeastern border of the property. During construction of each house, there will be anti-tracking pads installed on the driveway, rough cuts in all topsoil stockpiled in designated areas until lawns are put in. Once catch basins are installed, silt, stacks, and hay bales will be utilized to keep them clean and free from soil. Now, I'd like to address the town, some of the town department comments, but before I go there, does anyone have any, I was relatively brief, any questions about what I've presented so far? Okay, seeing none, I sent an email to my engineer, Larry Edwards and Associates, or Jason Edwards and Associates now, and I'd like to read it for the record so everyone knows what I'm doing and then moving forward. "Dear, good morning, Ian," that's the engineer I've been working with, "as I understand, the following items must be changed on my plan. Number one, we need to increase the drainage to accommodate 1.3 inches of stormwater runoff and move the retention out of the right-of-way, the town property, and shift it up the driveway a little bit. Number two, we need to make a note on the map that lots two and three are responsible for maintenance of a 24-inch concrete drainage pipe." Let me show you that. "On the end of Candlewood Road, there's a catch basin, and the catch basin has a pipe that runs across this property, but there's no legal easement. I'm certainly willing to give the town an easement should they desire to maintain it, but Mr. Casey feels it would be more prudent to have the homeowners responsible and deed restricted, which I'm certainly wanting to do, and say that either the pipe has to remain and be maintained or removed and entrenched, so the water shoots through the back of the property. The, the second option may be a little dicey within the wetlands, because then it may go back, so I'd rather just deed restricted and let the homeowners be responsible." It's a sealed pipe, so there's, nothing should ever happen to it. "Number three, show concrete driveways through the aprons. The apron is the actual asphalt coming down, and align the sidewalks on the north side with existing sidewalks, which is not a problem." He wants us to add some bearings to that cell tower lot to tie it to lot one. He wants to, there's a UI pole on lot one that exists and has been there, and and although it's really the responsibility of me and the United Illuminating Company to work this out, because I have to give them additional easements to get, you know, underground utilities to the back, the town engineer would like the easement shown on the map that I modify. And lastly, Kelly Kerrigan, the tree warden, and I have been in touch many, many times, and she identified some street trees she would like along both the existing lot one and the little strip that's going back, which I have no problem with, so we're going to show, I believe, seven street trees. Now, in speaking with the town planner, Sismita, and I agree with her, I believe after any questions are answered, I would encourage the chairman and the board to table this matter until the next public hearing, at which time I can bring an updated map showing those exact issues to the satisfaction of the town engineer and the tree warden.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm now going to direct the town planner to summarize her staff report to know if the proposal is consistent or inconsistent with the P O C D.
Thank you. The proposal is for building single-family homes in the RS1 zone of the town, which allows for those kind of, the proposal is to allow for single-family home development in RS1 zone of the town, which allows for single-family residential uses. So it is generally consistent with the P O C D goals to encourage single-family home development. It also meets the housing plan objectives as embedded in the P O C D. But again, regarding stormwater, trees, tree trees, and, you know, maintenance of the drain pipe, these are all the issues that are, you know, also addressed in the P O C D under, you know, conservation chapter and infrastructure chapter. So in order to meet those goals and objectives, we, I think the commission should give the applicant extra time so that he can work with the town engineer to his satisfaction and address all those comments, and also work with the tree warden to make sure all her conditions are met, and then once I receive updated comments from the town engineer and tree warden, I'll forward them to you as part of my updated staff report for next month, and hopefully they should resolve by next month. The applicant is allowed to have up to two extensions per state statutes, so this is well within the timeframe that is requesting, and I, I think we don't have a regular meeting on October 17th, or 15th, because it's, the town council is also meeting on that day because the Monday is Columbus Day holiday and everything got moved. So we are going to hold a special meeting of Planning Commission on October 22nd. And if this commission were to announce towards the end of the meeting that the matter has been tabled and will be reopened for public, public hearing and discussion at the October 21st Planning Commission hearing at 6:30 in the Town Hall Council Chambers, then we don't have to legally re-advertise it, and he doesn't have to legally send notifications to neighbors once again. So I request to repeat the date, time, and location of the meeting when you are going to make a vote. Thank you.
Wait, one second. Do I still go forward with asking him to ask questions?
Yeah, you can ask.
Okay. So now I'm going to ask my fellow commission members to ask the petitioner any questions that they have on the application.
Mr. DeCilio, how long is the driveway?
The, let me reference the map. It's 240 feet to lot two. It continues to 380 feet in total. That will serve lots three and four, and the driveways are staggered within that.
So there's a comment from the fire chief that the driveway needs to be 25 feet wide if it's under 300 feet, and 30 feet wide if it's over 300 feet. I think you said it was 25 feet wide?
The accessway is 25 feet wide. And the driveway is 18 feet wide, running the first length, and then it narrows to 16 feet wide, and then it narrows to 12 feet wide. This is the paved area, not the accessway. So that's the actual paved, 18 feet wide is the paved area, which allows for traffic going in two directions, and then it narrows after it gets past the first lot on the right to serve the last two lots. It narrows to 16, which is a little narrower. You squeeze them, and then it narrows to, to 12 for the very last property.
As you're negotiating with the other town departments, will you clarify with the fire chief what the requirement is for the driveway's width?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that's a requirement. I mean,
Yeah, Joe.
25 feet is a road, not a, not a driveway, and this is a private driveway, so I'm not sure about the fire marshals or fire chiefs' comments.
I'm sorry about this. What was your question? I didn't understand. Like, you think he did not meet the requirements?
In, in your section, comments from other town staff.
Uh huh.
The fire chief's, item three, page three of four, the fire chief stated that the driveway needs to be 25 feet wide if it is under 300 feet long, and 30 feet wide if it is over 300 feet long, in his email dated September 9th, 2024.
Yeah, so I think it is well within that standards, right, on the drawings? The driveway is 25 feet wide, and then it is 240 feet long.
Let me address that. It just popped in my head. The subdivision regulations in the town of Stratford stipulate that any interior lot that has a driveway of, I believe, is it 300, you read it, 300 feet or less, I thought it was 200 feet or less, but 300 feet or less can have a 25-foot accessway. Any lot that is more than 2, 300 feet has to have a 30-foot accessway. That does not mean it has to have the paved area, and what I did was I went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for this very matter, I can't believe it just, like, it's been a while, and I asked them, "I have plenty of room to do the 30 feet, but it didn't lay out well." So I said, "Can I get a waiver from 30 feet to 25 feet for lots two and lots three?" Lot four didn't require it, so I put three 25-foot strips together, but then I designed a single driveway up the middle one. So when the, the notes you're reading from the fire chief or fire department, I believe are addressing the town subdivision regulations, which I meet with both design and with waivers in my drawing.
I would appreciate clarification
I would too.
from the fire chief that that's okay.
Because this doesn't have any notes, notes from the fire chief about a subdivision regulation. It just says the driveway needs to be 25 feet wide if under 300 long and 30 feet if over 300 long, and you're saying it's 380 feet long, so it would just ease all of our minds, I think, to just to get, since you have to get some other-
Streets, streets in town are not 30 feet wide, just so you know. If you drive down Perry Lane off of Nichols Avenue, it's paved 26 feet wide. I'm just sharing with you what I know.
I'm, I'm reading this, and it says the driveway needs to be certain width, so since you have to go back to other people, it would just help our minds just to get clarification.
I think I will contact the fire chief personally between now and the next meeting, and I will have him send out an email of clarification.
Cool, thanks.
Was it fire chief or fire marshal? I'm sorry.
It says fire chief.
Fire chief. I'll take care of that. No problem.
It's one and the same.
I just saw on the big large-size drawings that, you know, it's 380 feet long, but then, you know, the combined driveway width for all three lots is 25, 25, 25, 75 feet.
But he's, but he's only doing one driveway now, not three.
No, but on the drawings, you have
He has three, but he said he's doing one.
You've combined them. Is it a revised drawing that I don't see?
Our driveway.
I'm sorry, it's just, what is the question?
So John Casey, John Casey and I discussed this, and even though for each individual lot, you have provided like 25, 25, and 25.
Correct.
The overall total width is 75 feet.
Of the frontage for the three rear lots.
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes, and there is enough room for the fire truck to go in and turn around and come back.
The, one of the, my dad's a retired fireman. He died last year at 93, so believe me, I respect the fire department. When you build a cul-de-sac, they want it 100 feet wide so they can circle around their pumper and come out. That's a private road. That's a road regulation, building cul-de-sacs. This is a driveway like as if you had a lot on Main Street, Putney, or Nichols, or wherever you are, and you're putting in a driveway. And if you have a one-car garage, the driveway's 12 feet wide, and if you have a two-car garage, driveway's like 14, 16 feet wide, or whatever the width of the garage is, 20 feet wide. Right now, I respect the commissioner's question, but I believe there's a conflation between the subdivision regulations and the misinterpretation by the fire chief, because I'm not building a 30-foot wide road if he wants one, just so you know. I mean, if he says, "I want that," I'm not proposing that, because that's-
I see three.
I mean, 30 feet is like from here to the wall, it's more. It's, it's, it's wider than the average road. Like Sunnybank Avenue isn't 30 feet wide, just so you know, just to give you perspective. But I'll get clarification, as I promised, for the next meeting.
So on the maps, it says that there is a common driveway easement for these three lots in the front, and the combined total width of that driveway is 75 feet. Per fire code, you need a minimum of 30 feet to enter the site, but here, based on the subdivision regulations, he provided 25 feet for each individual lot, but the combined is 75 feet. So it exceeds the dimension that is required by fire code to enter that particular lot because it's a common driveway easement, and that was my interpretation of this, but I can certainly check this again with the fire chief to confirm that he's okay with it. I, I don't foresee any problems because they're going to use it as a common driveway easement.
But are you doing three driveways in, and the longest one is the middle one going back to lot three, or one driveway? See, he's describing one driveway, but in these plans, there's still drawn three, and number four ends here, but that doesn't get into the lot, and- And four enters here, and two enters here with one driveway.
It's because per subdivision regulations, he has to show that he has provided twenty-five per lot. But on the, when you build it, you don't see the lines of the driveway, because it's a common-
So the only paved part will be twenty-five feet.
Yes.
So that's what needs to be approved by Fire Marshal.
No, the only paved is twenty-five, 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 so it will be this much wide, seventy-five. You don't see the middle lines. They will disappear.
No, I understand that. So will it be paved seventy-five feet across?
No.
No.
You put gravel, or what do you do?
No, it's lawn. There's going to be a single driveway. It's going to look like a private road, and it's going to serve the three homes. This is extremely common.
So that way, this isn't here, and this-
You don't see the lines in between.
But it's not even going to be gravelled. This is just grass.
The strip, the little strip.
This plan needs to be updated, to take away these two driveway, like, what looks like a driveway, no?
Let me, let me see if I can explain this. Again, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not an attorney, but I've done land use for about forty years now. The subdivision regulations stipulate that every house has to have a certain amount of frontage on a public road. It then stipulates that if, if it's an interior lot, two conditions must be met. It must have a much smaller frontage, but must have a greater land area, one and a half times the zone. So if you forget the driveway totally, just, we just speak about the regulations, each of those rear lots needs to have twenty-five feet of frontage on James Farm, unless it's more than three hundred feet and needs to have thirty feet. So instead of me drawing a twenty-five-foot, thirty-foot, thirty-foot, I went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I said, I'm going to do a single driveway anyway. Why don't we do twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five? And they approved it. So that now runs with the land. So the new rules for me and this property are to create the three rear lots. I need twenty-five feet for each of the lots, which I've shown. Now, I can engineer three driveways, and each one of them have a twelve-foot-wide driveway, and have three driveways going up parallel to each one of them, one peeling off to the left, one peeling off to the right, and one going straight, like the Blue Angels when they, but that is ridiculous, because the cost of paving, the drainage, the retention, no one wants that. The town engineer, I'm sure, wouldn't want that. I certainly don't want that. So what I proposed was a single driveway designed to serve the three lots, which is what I'm presenting. Now, the comments, as promised, I will talk to the Fire Chief and say, I think you're conflating the subdivision kind of rule in assuming or interpreting it as a driveway paved rule. And that is, I will say, for the record, incorrect. And if it is correct, this plan is going in the garbage, and we're not subdividing the land, period, because I'm not putting three driveways up that way. It just makes no sense. We'll think, we'll find an alternate, alternate plan for the land.
So that twenty-five and twenty-five on each side is just, it's just land? It's not going to be-
Right. So what happens is, what you have, what you have from a owner, what you have from an ownership perspective, is you have Lot Number Two in the back owns this sliver, speaking loud.
Gotcha, of grass and land, yeah.
This lot owns the middle sliver.
So it's not gravelled, it's not driveway, it's not-
And this lot owns this sliver. But what I'm proposing in this plan is I will create deed restrictions on these three lots and road maintenance agreement. They call it road maintenance for the driveway, so that nobody, wherever they sell it, say, well, you own it, all your own are plowed it, they never charge me any of that. That's a nightmare.
Yeah.
To have deeded restrictions on how that, the maintenance with that driveway works. And the driveway is safe, it's quite wide, it's eighteen feet wide, which is pretty wide for a driveway, so two cars can travel comfortably. And so we'll get clarification on the Commissioner's question, and then I think we'll all have more clarity in October.
Thank you for explaining that and getting that clarity.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, were there any other questions? I will next be asking the members of the public to comment in favor of opposition, in favor or opposition to the petition. I will also allow general comments and observations from those who are neither in favor or opposition to the petition. Each member of the public will provide three minutes to make their arguments. If someone wishes to speak again, you'll be given a chance after everyone who signs up gets their chance to speak first. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak, speak in favor of the subject position, petition? Raise your hand or sign up to speak. Seeing nobody. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the subject position, petition? Raise your hand or sign up to speak. Seeing nobody. Is there anyone neither, who is neither in favor nor opposition, who wishes to provide comments on the subject petition? Okay, also seeing nobody. So may I now have a motion to table the public hearing portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right, so the motion passes, passes with four votes. So moved. This public hearing is tabled. Motion has been made.
Can you please tell that it will be tabled until next month?
Thank you. This will, this petition will be tabled until October twenty-second of twenty twenty-four at our norm, at our special six-thirty PM meeting that night.
And it'll be held in the town?
And it'll be held in the council, council chambers of Stratford Town Hall to discuss this matter. That's what's written down here. Okay, continue on. All right, so I said all that. Okay, so may I have a motion to open the administrative agenda for today's, thank you, Mr. Lucilio. Okay, so may I have a motion to open the administrative agenda for today's meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded by the Commission to recess to the administrative session. The motion has passed. So now on our regular agenda. So now we don't have to reopen.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes of the regular August twentieth meeting, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So now do we reopen it?
It will table, the public hearing is tabled.
That's what I thought. So now we have the Greenway and Complete Streets update. Do you have an update for us, Sussmita?
So we have distributed some educational materials through Greenway Committee members and Mayor's Newsletter. It's also posted on the town's website and social media outlets. We're also trying to, you know, send more information on sharing the road for all users and making some road safety tips available to pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers of automobiles through Tip of the Week in Mayor's Newsletter or in social media. And possibly, we may be holding an event by the train station sometime next month, where we have a table set up and give, give out some paper brochures to people who stop by the table, along with maybe have, give them some reflective gear as a freebie, so that people can stop by and learn more about road safety, now that we have a new configuration of bike lanes and driving lanes on Main Street. So we've been working on that behind the scenes, and also the consultant for this project is busy working on the ninety, sixty percent designs for Complete Streets Phase Two by Paradise Green, which I'm hoping that we would bring it to our Greenway Committee for discussion next month, and maybe also hold another public event to seek more input before we send it over to DOT. So these are the two updates that I have.
Awesome. I look forward to seeing that next month. Okay, so now we have these zoning regulations up, thank you, Sussmita, zoning regulations update draft discussion.
Ed, you want to talk, or?
So Sussmita and I have been going through the regulations, the regulations that have been modified, or, you know, there've been serious modifications, or many modifications made to them, and we started with the accessory dwelling units. And we put together a number of questions, and we forwarded those over to Jay Habansky for, for his comments on those. And we'll be working through each of those. Next on the list is alcoholic beverages, boarding, and seasonal dwellings, I believe, that we're going to be talking with on Friday. And as we get the feedback from, from Jay on that, we'll bring those back to the Commission so that we can talk about those changes or the concerns that we have there as, as well.
So basically, I can summarize what our questions were, and I encourage you to read the regulation. If any of you has more questions, feel free to set up a time with me to discuss this. This is important, that Planning Commission pays attention to this, because this proposal to update the zoning regulations will be referred back to the Planning Commission for a vote, like you do for text amendments. And at that time, it'll be hard to just read the whole document and just offer input. But by looking at every section closely right now, you have the opportunity to ask thoughtful questions. The first question that we had was that, you know, there is a line in the beginning under purpose, it says, without increasing the number of residential buildings, and it was struck off. And we were confused, because as we read the language, somewhere down below, it says that all accessory dwelling units should have an interior access to the principal dwelling unit, which means that the number of buildings will not increase if they're connected. But then way down below, there's also a discussion about detached accessory dwelling units being allowed in RS1 and RS2 zones only, where the lot size's minimum should be twenty thousand square feet. And that would increase the number of accessory buildings on lots if it's detached, unless it is an existing garage converted into an ADU and not a new structure being built on the lot. So we had this question to the consultant, whether we have the same standard or same definition when we are looking at conversions and new buildings of ADUs, or we have different standards for conversions and, you know, different for new accessory dwelling units on, that are promoted in RS1, RS2 zones. So according to our current regulation, an accessory dwelling unit is allowed if the principal owner resides in the building, if it has an interior connection to the principal dwelling unit, and the area of the new ADU, as we call it, is either a minimum, I mean, either four hundred feet or twenty-five percent of livable area, whichever is smaller. So oftentimes, when a resident comes to my office and asks if they have an eight hundred square foot livable floor area, if the basement below is unfinished, they ask me, can I finish my basement into an ADU for my mother? And according to the current regulation, you can only do four hundred feet or twenty-five percent of eight hundred, whichever is smaller. So he cannot finish the full basement, even though it's not visible from outside, and he can make full use of it of, as an ADU. So the way the language is written in this regulation, they changed that size a little bit, and they said up to one thousand feet as a benchmark. But we felt, like both Ed and I, and forty percent of livable area, we, both Ed and I felt like, for conversions, we shouldn't have any metric. Even if you have a twelve hundred square feet livable area, you can allow a full finished basement underneath if it's twelve hundred. You shouldn't cap it at one thousand. But when it is a new ADU being created to the side of the lot, maybe like a detached that is allowed, according to this regulation, only in RS1 and RS2 zones, maybe you would have a different metric for that. But the catch here is also that Housing Partnership discussed this regulation last year, and Housing Partnership was opposed to detached accessory dwelling units. They wanted to see only attached accessory dwelling units in the town. So I requested Jay to come discuss with the Stratford Housing Partnership once again, and we are going to have a meeting on October seventeenth, when Jay will be coming over to discuss. And I don't know if the consultant is coming, but we'd have a productive discussion on whether the town should allow detached accessory dwelling units or not. The other question we had was the definition of family. What do you mean by a family? The definition of family has significantly changed in the current generation, and, you know, Jay assured me that the consultant is actually reviewing this definition and trying to bring a more legal definition that reflects the current generation on that. And then we also had a question on, you know, this regulation states that an accessory dwelling unit can only house two persons. And we're like, what if there is an elderly mother-in-law or mother living upstairs, and she has an empty basement downstairs that she can convert into an ADU? And then why can't she have her son or daughter, their family live, like if they're young children, like only one child? That means three, right? Not two anymore. So we were like, should it be number of persons per household as opposed to number of persons per ADU in the regulation? And that's a question we asked, and currently, every single ADU owner has to go before the Zoning Commission for an acceptance of their ADU. But the regulation says ADUs must be allowed as of right if they meet certain standards, like if the owner is residing and he submits an affidavit, and they meet these regulations, which is fine, but if the, if the town or the Zoning Commission were to vote for detached accessory dwelling units, I think it is better to be more conservative for detached accessory dwelling units to actually bring them before the Commission. Attached will not increase the lot's building coverage, and it will probably have minimal impacts when, you know, you're considering drainage capacity, because right now, the drainage capacity has been calculated based on certain number of buildings on lots. But if you increase this impervious area, then the calculations will be different for the town. So I think that should be a case-by-case review, especially if this were to be all over the town, then considering the flooding situation in South End, I, I feel like, you know, the Zoning Commission should pay more close attention to detached, if at all, you know, they're moving in that direction to approve it. There is also a section on affordability requirements in this regulation, in which, you know, this was always there in our current regulations too, but not one person has, I think, has availed this, not that I know of in the town. And this is an opportunity for the town to actually increase those eight dash thirty G units, without having large-scale developments, but having, you know, ADUs that are affordable, you know, wherever they can permit. But again, it all boils down to why didn't the owner of a property ever avail it? Maybe because they were never provided an incentive to go through this process and actually, you know, provide an affordable deed restricted unit, because the process involves going before the Zoning Commission for approval, filing an affidavit every year, and making sure that they meet a certain threshold. And an ADU itself is very costly, like it seems, if you had to finish a basement, it'll at least take you fifty to sixty thousand dollars, just to finish a basement that is roughly eight hundred to one thousand square feet. So if, if the town is serious about increasing its eight dash thirty G count and, you know, bring itself to a moratorium, or, you know, maybe the town should think about incentives. And that's a conversation that the Zoning Commission should talk, you know, openly with the administration to see if that's something that they're agreeable to work with, in providing an incentive to a homeowner, until the town reaches that threshold of moratorium. And maybe then you remove the incentive after that, as long as those units are deed restricted, so that you don't have out-of-scale developments being dropped in the town wherever, you know, So that you don't have out-of-scale developments being dropped in the town wherever, you know, a developer wants. So these were our general questions and comments. And I sent those questions over to Jay. And if you have additional questions or comments, you can voice them over right now. Ask me, or you can set up a meeting with me to discuss this. I know it's too much information just to, you know, because we both read it so thoroughly. It's in my head, but, you know, it may take you some time to think and then come back with any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions because I didn't know which section you were going to go through first. But now that I know, I'll read through that. And then can you remind me which section you're going through next?
Yeah, so what we're doing is, you know, going through, there's substantially changed sections. So we're going through each one of those sections first and just doing them right in order. So you can see in the, all right, um, this document, right?
Right.
And if you go to page 16, on page 16, there's substantially changed sections. So we started with the accessory dwelling units. And then next, we're going to alcoholic beverages, one of my personal favorites. Boarding, and then seasonal dwellings, I think, we were going to try to touch base on on Friday. We'll, we'll do the same thing. We'll, we'll come up with, with a bunch of questions and bring them here back to the, back to the commission.
Thank you.
The accessory dwelling units is, 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 there's a lot there in that. It takes a while to go, go through that.
Okay.
Ed and Sussmita, would it be possible to circulate the schedule of when you plan to meet on each topic so that we could join you if we're available?
Sure, I can send it over. But one thing I would say is if a commission, if there are more commission members meeting outside the commission to discuss a commission matter, then it is not allowed per Robert's Rules of Order. So if you want to meet with me one-on-one, that is better. Because if you wanted to meet when Ed and I are meeting, and I cannot say no to Alec, and then if the, you know, if everybody's meeting more than two people, it constitutes a quorum, and we can't meet like that.
Is it okay if Ed's included since he's an alternate, not a member?
So last meeting, we assigned Ed to work with Sussmita on this, so...
Yeah, it's still the same.
So I could meet with Ed and you?
You can meet with me individually.
But I can't meet with you and Ed?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions tonight about this topic? Okay, so the next thing, if you look at the agenda, item number 10B has been here at least since I've been a member. So we are, this commercial kitchen. I'd like to, um, take, get a motion to take off the table of the text amendment of 10B, so the text amendment for section 4.1.3, to allow a commercial kitchen in a private residence. So a motion to take that off the table.
So moved.
Second that, please?
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then a motion to remove it from the agenda, please.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so now we adjourn at 7:23 PM. And our next meeting is October 22nd of '24. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.